Thank you, everyone. Again, a little bit of a, you know, strange schedule with the holidays and the vacation coming up, so we are here on a Tuesday night for an additional Board of Education Regular Business Meeting. Erin, could you please do the call of, yes, tenants, please? Thank you.
Mr. Lucetti?
I'm here.
Mrs. Rowland?
Here.
Mrs. Rivers?
Here.
Mrs. Tedesco?
Here.
Dr. Barnett?
Here.
Mr. Myers?
Here.
And Mr. Scheide is absent.
Okay, so Erin, also I have to ask you, has there been any additions to the agenda? She's having a little bit of a computer update issue right now, so she's a little bit manual at this time.
Yes, we have three additional resolutions. One for RS Abrams, one for the findings of an independent investigation, and the third one is to adopt findings by the forensic audit.
Yeah, we'll read them in more detail, but I just need a motion to accept those all to the agenda for this evening.
Motion.
Motion, Ms. Rowland, second.
Second.
Second, Ms. Rivers, all in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
I abstention.
Okay, one abstention, motion carries. Thank you all. All right, so moving, we'll do that business later when we do the rest of that, so we're going to get into the superintendent's report, so Dr. Graham, what do you think?
Good evening. Real quick, this evening for the superintendent's report, Mr. Baki and myself have started to reach out to community organizations for budget presentations. We anticipate that the board will adopt the budget on April 22nd, and following that, we're happy to share the budget information with anyone and everyone who will listen. So if you're a community group out there listening on YouTube right now and you want us to come and present about the budget, we're happy to join your group and share some of the great things that are happening through the district and also about the budget that's been prepared for the '25-'26 school year. On that same note, a number of students and myself created a video, the Budget PSA Video, regarding the single polling location, which was a discussion that took place over successive board meetings throughout the fall and into the winter. And so for those of you who don't know, the board had decided to move from the elementary schools having the polling locations for the budget vote and board trustee election, and they're all going to take place here at the high school in the West Gym on May 20th. So if you want to check out a really fun video, I think it was fun, by our students, really produced by our students in our TV studio, which is tremendous. The students did amazing work, and I thank Ms. O'Brien for shepherding that work and Mr. Avila and working with our students to get that up and off the ground. I think we made it unavoidable, so it's on Facebook, I think it's on Instagram. If you go to our district website, you can advance anywhere on the website without looking at it or acknowledging it, so please check it out. And without further ado, at this point, we will move into the final portion of the superintendent's report, which is an instructional budget presentation on staffing, PPS, curriculum, and instruction. So I invite the board to go into the seats at this time.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Okay, so tonight's budget presentation, you can hear, is, can you hear me in the mic or no?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay. All right, so tonight's budget presentation, we're gonna, there we go. So we're gonna go over, first, I'm gonna give an overview of the budget as a whole, a brief explanation of kind of where we've been and where we're going. Then I'm gonna turn it over to Lori, who's gonna be giving an overview of special education and PPS. After that, Dr. Tom Dolan's gonna talk a little bit about curriculum and instruction budget, which includes all the departmental and building level budgets. And then Barbara will finish up with personnel and staffing to give some highlights of that, and we'll give an overview of the upcoming important dates. So, looking at an overview of our budget as a whole, so what you're looking at here is our projected revenue and use of financial resources or use of our district savings and reserves. You can see the top line is our biggest revenue source is property taxes, and our property tax cap is 2.15 percent this year. So that is one number that we are certain of at this time, that has already been submitted to the Office of the State Comptroller, and that will not be changing. 2.15 percent is within the allowable tax levy. Our next line, state aid, so that's the number that is based off the governor's budget, and that number will change. So as of right now, the state budget was due on April 1st, it is again delayed, as it has been somewhat frequently lately. So we're in a little bit of a holding pattern, waiting for upcoming new numbers. We don't expect them to change materially usually, if anything, they tend to go up. So the number that we see there, we're hopeful will actually rise a little bit, but we are somewhat confident in that number being a seven-and-a-half percent increase in state aid, which is very favorable. The next line, local revenue, that, similar to property tax cap, we do not expect that to change. So we're pretty set on that, it's just under 1.6 million, which is about one, a little less than one-and-a-half percent increase. So total revenue as of right now is looking like it's up 4.6 percent, which is very good, and we are hopeful when that state budget comes that we will see a little bit more of an increase there. The use of fund balance or financial resources, right now, we're projecting at $4 million flat year-to-year, and that is money that we use that's been set aside for specific expenses, that we use to help to offset the cost to the taxpayer each year. That would bring us to a total expenditure budget of $152 million, which is approximately four-and-a-half percent. But again, that bottom number will likely change over the next week or two before we adopt, when the state budget comes out. Okay, so before I turn it over to Lori, I just want to give just a quick recap of where the presentations that we have done, just in case anybody's listening for the first time. Back in February, we did our first revenue and fund balance presentation, which, if you were interested in what I was just talking about, we have a lot more details on in terms of like what our reserve levels are, where our revenue sources come from. Then in March, we did the non-instructional budget presentation. We do not expect any of those expenses really to change, so we went over facility, security, transportation, technology, those numbers again are locked in. And then tonight, we're gonna be going over all the instructional portions of the budget. So the overwhelming majority of the budget is gonna be discussed tonight before our adoption on April 22nd. So without further ado, I'll pass it off to Lori for special ed.
Good evening. Let me just make sure that works. Okay. Over the past eight months, I've had the opportunity to learn a lot about the North Babylon School District, its values, its strengths, as well as the areas where we could grow together. I have had a great, I have a great deal of gratitude and appreciation for a large number of staff that I'm not gonna thank individually, but I've learned a lot and leaned on a lot of people in the last eight months, so I just appreciate you all very much. I do want to highlight our two coordinators of special education, Ms. Emhoff and Ms. Lazarus, who are with us today, and just really grateful for their commitment to the kids and the families here in North Babylon. It's really evident in everything they do, so thanks for being here. We're gonna start with the financial components of our department, really just highlighting how vital of a role this is in ensuring the programs for students with disabilities, that students receive the services and the resources that they require in order to succeed. And special education programming entails a wide range of costs, and effective funding is essential. So although this slide indicates a 14 percent increase, the next slide really provides a lot more detail about our actual expenditures to date this year, and how our '25-'26 budget is actually just a moderate 3 percent increase over what we actually spent this year. So line by line, in terms of equipment, we really are preparing for a large incoming kindergarten class of 72 learners this year. This necessitates investments in communication devices, in adaptive furniture, and other specialized equipment to meet their needs. These resources are essential to ensuring our youngest learners can access the curriculum meaningfully from the start. In regard to conferences and travel, with the support of LIU, professional development has been a major priority this year. Staff training has focused on MTSS and LRE. I mean, because of a collective effort, I'm very optimistic that North Babylon will no longer require a focused intervention support plan from the state for next year. Looking ahead, we plan to formalize a professional development plan focusing on evaluation practices for dyslexia and bilingual learners, IEP goal writing, progress monitoring, implementation of evidence-based practices, data collection methods, and modified curriculum development. When looking at special ed office supplies, since January, all special education and 504 documents are being shared electronically via our secure collaboration portal, which has been improving efficiency, data security, communication, while also reducing paper usage and costs. In regard to testing materials, to date, we process 113 CSE referrals this year. The budget reflects a modest increase in testing materials to support this volume, as well as adopting digital platforms that streamline scoring and data analysis. In terms of special education materials, this budget line just reflects our growing team and their needs, and we're reviewing this process across the district to ensure equitable access to resources and responsible allocation of funds. For special education tuitions, while some costs and tuitions are harder to predict, we can predict our commitment to expanding in-district supports, that remains strong. We expect fewer outside placements for our youngest learners and continue to work to broaden the range of students we can serve within our own schools. This year, so far, we have had 62 transfer students enter into the district with IEPs, 12 of them who are already in private placement, out of district placements, two of those being residential. So this increase explains the rise in special ed BOSI's costs for next year. The special ed OCBOSI's costs represent juniors and seniors that need a higher level of support, that will also be attending half-day programs at, off-campus at BOSI's to build real-world career skills. It's simply a reduction based on the profile of our learners for next year, and the number of students in other CTE programs remains flat and consistent. I want to focus on residential and contractual services for a second. I just want to clarify that while the budget line for residential placements appears to have increased substantially on the previous slide, I'll just go back, it looks like a very substantial increase. I just want to clarify that we needed to do a little bit more accurate planning for this year, so we really under-budgeted for the '24-'25 school year, so the budget adopted for next year is much more aligned with the reallocated funds for this year. We didn't account for NICID and the Suffolk County Department of Social Services fees, and those are significant. This increase from the last year, it really is a minimal increase of 5 percent. In terms of contractual services, we anticipate a significant reduction in contracted speech providers and OT providers. This is due to two things, one, just programmatic adjustments and staffing changes, so our related service providers, our administrators, have really worked closely with families and with each other to make sure that our recommendations align with educational recommendations rather than just clinical recommendations, so our service models are gonna be changing a little bit for next year. Currently, we have three full-time occupational therapists, we just hired a fourth, we're thrilled to be adding the fourth in the upcoming weeks, and including in this proposed budget is also an additional FTE for a speech pathologist, so we're projecting significant decreases in our contractual services for next year. Nursing continues to be an area of focus for the district. This is a costly factor within the contractual budget, but also more importantly, you know, our goal is to have employees within all of our schools to provide competent continuum of care across the district. Questions there? Okay. In terms of health services, the change, really the change to note is the out-of-district medical costs. North Babylon is now home to more than 300 students who attend private schools. So while we're not responsible for the tuition of the private schools, we are responsible for transportation, for special education services and evaluations, and also health services. So this year, we planned much more accurately, so we now have an informed analysis of our projected costs for next year, and that will be around $500,000. Questions there? Okay. In terms of pupil personnel, a larger percentage of the home instruction services that are provided by the district are now provided by our own employees versus contracted staff, so that is reducing. There does continue to be a rising need for home instruction services based on not only physical but psychiatric or social-emotional concerns and recommendations by outside medical professionals, that that would be the best and only way to educate a student. So we are, we have updated our procedures, we are much more accountable to approvals and services being provided, so we're doing a great job there and glad to hear that at least our staff are providing those services more. Unlike private schools, charter schools are there. Charter schools are publicly funded but independent from, independently operated from us. This year, we saw an increase to 14 students attending charter schools, and although that seems like a small number, it's definitely a trend that we need to watch in terms of the cost of learners, it is a significant cost, so we just need to be able to watch that and monitor that. And I feel like I missed something. I feel like that's it. I think I got it. Yes?
Are we not responsible for transportation for charter schools as well?
Yes.
I would say, any questions on the special ed PPS portion from the board?
Good evening, everybody. When I arrived, I was very lucky to inherit a budget that was responsible and progressive, and that's a nice combination. It's one that certainly is very careful about what we spend, but really does advance some programs in some exciting ways. Where am I pointing? Exciting ways. There we go. Got it, okay. Glad I got to that one, because this one, I think, is Dr. Graham's favorite slide. It shows zeros across the board, no increase at all, because we really are trying to hold the line. When there's not a need to increase a cost, we don't increase a cost, and you're gonna see that several times throughout this presentation. Building level supplies, there's a couple of notes there. The significant increase that you're gonna see is near the bottom under assemblies, and there, what we hope to do is to have the flexibility to explore some other options, increase options for students. As an example, just this week, we offered a BMX program over at the Robert Moses Middle School, and I was lucky to be in a middle school class that day to hear kids talk not about BMX, but to talk about the message, which was one of respect, and they all got that. They all understood that that was, no pun intended, a vehicle to get them to where they could understand how they could better respect one another and themselves. Under instructional supplies, there are a couple of increases. Notably, under science, you'll see that there's an increase under supplies, and all of these are some very, for some very good reasons. There, there are three, there are a number of new state mandated investigations that we need to fund, three for chemistry and three for physics, and we are purchasing all of the supplies necessary for those. Under technology supplies, because of the nine-period day, we've been able to expand our program considerably, but that means we need some supplies for robotics, architecture, computer-aided design, and some new courses in car care, automotive, and wood structures. Finally, on that line, you'll see an increase in cosmetology of $28,000, again, for a very good reason. We've doubled the number of sections in cosmetology, offering even more to our students. So all of the big increases that you see, those three, understood, we understand it's to expand options for kids. The last one, though, the $79,000 new line that's established for elementary supplies is because we've established a separate line for elementary supplies. Previously, social studies would have one line, K through 12, English, one line, K through 12. Now we've established a separate line for $79,000, which has also contributed to some of the low increases in the other departments, because not having to add to that, they were able to absorb a little bit of this, and that $79,603 is now set aside just for elementary. Yes?
Is that the same case in cosmetology? Is that a new fund? Is that why the zero?
Yes, we, I believe the-
That is the same, yeah, it is the case.
Thank you to Frank, who indicated that, yes, that is the case. A new line being established. Thank you. Under general instruction, one increase that you'll note, and note that I'm accentuating many of the positive things that are in this budget, is the planned pilot supply down at the bottom, which is an increase of $5,000. Again, a new budget line, one we didn't have before. Principal Hasandres, over at Robert Moses Middle School, applied to the state for a program, she was accepted, and now next year, we'll be doing a lot of the work on this planned pilot. In fact, there was a meeting at the middle school just about today to follow up on that and to begin the program over the summer. In art, you'll see an increase under contractual services, that's for the TV studio, cables, data cards, and other items. Some of them are disposal, disposable, all of them are expensive, hence the increase of $4,000. I also note that Ms. O'Brien found $3 in art supplies, and I would like to thank her for that.
I'm sorry, I lost my train.
There we go. Well, let me go back. There was also a $1 increase in library supplies that I guess we should take some credit for also, I think that's coming up. Under music, again, a great increase. Take a look at the line for music conference and travel. The fact is, the cost of coach buses has gone up a little bit, and we anticipate next year having to send yet another student to the Eastern Conference for music. That would be a great thing to have to do, and we plan on funding that, and that will cover that. Here you see the $1 in library books that we've saved, and a decrease, in fact, in the school library in BOSI services. Under co-curricular, the one line that shows the most significant increase is athletic official fees. Interesting, athletic officials are contracted through BOSI's. They negotiate a contract with the different referee and umpire groups, and they have a contractual increase next year. And they are in a position to negotiate well, because nobody wants to be a referee or an umpire anymore. It's very hard, and if you've noticed at some games, it's hard to get officials at all, but we have set the money aside such that we will be able to meet that obligation. Guidance, this is Frank's favorite slide, this is another zero increase in the guidance department, and that is curriculum and instruction. Any questions? Yes?
I have two questions. With the change in lacrosse with the shot clock now, would that have an increase as well?
I believe that is a rule this year.
Yeah.
And therefore, it would have been budgeted in last year's budget such that we had the clocks out there this year, because I'm sure we have them if it's required by the section. So that would have been budgeted previously.
Yeah.
There in place. Yep.
I also have a question with athletics. I don't know if it, it shows reconditioning and- Hello? Yeah, we've had two, three really outstanding years with wrestling, but the mats, they look as if they are in need of repair. Are the wrestling mats part of the reconditioning?
I don't know. I will ask our athletic director, and I'm sure he would welcome that question.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
In regards to some of the sports uniforms, I believe that some of the teams have newer uniforms than other. Is there a particular plan moving forward for next season so that all, if they haven't received new uniforms for certain teams, I know particularly girls volleyball, I believe, that everyone is on a schedule to maybe have updated uniforms and equipment?
The standard practice is to have a cycle, to anticipate, you know, three years from now, we're gonna need new uniforms for this team, two years from now, this team, and to rotate that. I can certainly ask Jason what that schedule is, and if there's a team that you're looking at that is something you'd want specific questions about, volleyball, is that what I'm hearing? Oh, and Frank has further information.
I could probably just, we can definitely follow up, but as specific, but I, what I have for uniforms, gymnastics, girls lacrosse, girls soccer, wrestling, and softball. So if there's any others that we'd want to look into, we could definitely speak to Jason about that. And for reconditioning, I have football, baseball, softball, and boys lacrosse. Again, so if we want to look at wrestling, we'll look at that as well.
Volleyball. Yep. I'll follow up on volleyball. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for inviting me to present information and data on staffing for the upcoming '25-'26 school year. Our agenda for this evening is to review the employee group by numbers, identify the staffing numbers for '25-'26, and the detail of requested ads, and we'll talk about highlights throughout the presentation. The Personnel Office oversees both the instructional and non-instructional staff, which equates to approximately 950 staff members. These 950 employees are broken into 11 bargaining units, and 15 employees are considered non-aligned, which means they don't align with a union, and those are people who have a contract or benefits agreements like myself or Dr. Graham. On the next two slides, you will see how our employees are broken into groups, along with the number of identified retirements for the end of this year. There are 13 instructional staff members, and this year, they happen to all be teachers who are retiring, and one of the teachers will be retiring in December, however, we've included them in our potential savings. Four teachers of the 13 are from the elementary level, and nine of them are from the secondary level. We also have three paraprofessionals, one head custodian, and two custodial workers retiring at the end of the year. As of now, we intend on replacing all of their retirement positions. We have also added 4.8 FTEs, or full-time equivalents, positions to the budget for next year. These positions are based on student need and program shifts. In the event enrollment during the next months or over the summer changes, these positions could be adjusted. Listed here, you will see all of the staff additions that are currently part of this budget. The first one is a special education position, or 1.0 FTE. As Ms. Malish indicated, we have a very large incoming kindergarten class, and that prompted the need for an additional staff member. With regards to math, we've spoken about in the past how we will be adding a period of math to math requirements at the high school, and this also required 1.0 FTE for next year. With regards to ENL at the high school, we've had increased enrollment, and we need another FTE to help with those required mandated services. We've spoken about cosmetology and how we've been increasing enrollment in that program, and now we will need an additional .2, which is the equivalent of one period at the high school, to service that program. Our current .8 employee will become a 1.0, but it's only a .2 add. With regards to speech, we will be hiring a new speech therapist, speech and language therapist, and again, these are required services that our students need. We anticipate that hiring our own staff member will help, as Ms. Malish indicated, decrease the contractual services that she spoke about earlier. And also with resource room, we have increased student need for services, and that is a .6 FTE, which is basically the equivalent of three periods. So altogether, that adds up to 4.8 FTEs. We are well into the hiring process for next year, so all of these positions- So, all of these positions that we've talked about, I would say 90% of them have been posted. And we are actually, in many cases, at the level of doing demo lessons for these positions. We anticipate hiring most of the positions by the end of May. And obviously, we wanna have them all filled by June. But we are in very good shape with regards to recruiting and hiring for next school year. Staffing is very fluid. And at any time, there could be a resignation, an increase in student enrollment, or additional required mandated services. And through the support of the Board of Education and the community, we have been able to adapt and address to meet the needs of our students. Any questions?
With cosmetology, I love it. I just have a question. If we're doing cosmetology in the high school, are we technically saving money by not sending our students to BOSIs?
Well, theoretically, yes.
Okay, that sounds good.
Or the other, the money that was allocated could be used for other programs. So, it could go either way, and that could vary depending on the year.
All right, cool. And the second question, could you just, for the public, explain the process of advertising these positions and looking for candidates?
Sure. So, depending on the position, but I would say the majority of them get posted internally first. And then, there's a waiting period that we're contractually obligated to have. We also post externally, and we do that through a variety of mechanisms. We use OLAS, we also use Frontline, we also use K-12. We have been putting them on our website. We send them out to groups that have requested us for the notifications. We put them out on listservs. And I've been seeing them on Facebook as well. So, we have open recruiting for some positions, like ones that we may always need, parays, cafeteria aides, security guards. They remain open, and people can apply all the time. And then, there are others that have a very specific closing period.
Mr. Myers, also, I just asked Ms. Johansson, the cosmetology program is slated to have 48 students enrolled in it next year. So, you're looking at those 48 students not going out to a BOSI's program, so.
Okay, I get to go and tell you about the upcoming dates. So, you can see in the next coming weeks, almost consecutively beginning on April 22nd, there are very important meetings that we want the public to be aware about and remind about. We have talked about these dates before. But as you can see, they begin the 22nd, which is virtually right after we come back from break. And then, on the 6th, we have the budget being available and the hearing. And then, on the 20th, is the budget vote. And as you heard earlier, the budget vote will take place right here at North Babylon High School. It is the single polling place for this year. So, we're excited for that. So, the polls will be open, or the poll, I should say, will be open between 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. on Tuesday, May 20th.
So, I wanted to just thank Mr. Baki, Ms. Butler, Dr. Dolan, Ms. Malish, all the staff that support them and their work in putting together the budget. It's important to note that we're still not, you know, we're still waiting for numbers from the state at this point. So, we're not balanced just yet in terms of the revenue coming in and the expenditures. The state government was supposed to come out with a budget and have the things settled by April 1st. That hasn't happened. I think we're on our third budget extension at this point. So, they're continuing to have these conversations. We're optimistic that this will all be resolved. And as we get those new numbers in from the state, Mr. Baki and his team will be working, regardless of whether it's, you know, after hours, the vacation next week, the school shutdown. We'll be putting all of this information together and making sure that the board has that information so that we can move forward with a budget to adopt on April 22nd. So, I wanted to thank everybody who's, you know, minding all of that work, because it is a tremendous amount of work to do, especially when you don't have all the information that you need. So, I appreciate all of that from all of you. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Graham. Again, our thanks to everyone, as Dr. Graham said, but also to you as well, Dr. Graham, for, you know, your oversight and all this process and, you know, getting us to the numbers we need to be to, like everyone says, which is the most important thing, continue and enhance our programs throughout the process, which is what's most important. So, I do just wanna pass it over to Aaron to talk a little bit about the vote. As everyone knows, we are going to one single polling position. Please repeat that as much as possible out there. We're gonna try and get that message out. The last thing we wanna hear is that that message was not out there. So, we continue to share that at all of our meetings, on all of our documentation where we can. And we look out to each and every one of you to, you know, tell your neighbors. As well as, like Dr. Graham said, we're gonna go on a tour with as many groups as we possibly can. So, we'll share that message with them as well. So, Aaron, if you can just give us a little bit of details of what's coming up over the next couple of weeks.
We currently have two candidate positions that are up for reelection. All petitions are due by April 21st, 5:00 p.m. That is the Monday after break, so the district will be open. Those positions are for three-year terms. The district runs at-large, so that means the most votes get the seats. I believe that's everything you need. The voting, yeah.
Awesome, thank you so much. So, anyone has any questions, please refer to our district clerk's office, and she'll help you guide you through any of the process as well on that. So, we have a few action items, please bear with us. As Aaron and I discussed earlier, there were a few add-ons, and we're gonna start with those. So, those will be the first three, will be the add-ons to the agenda. So, I'll start with the first. I'm gonna need a motion. Whereas, on October 22nd, the Board of Education appointed R.S. Abrams to conduct a forensic examination on behalf of the district with a scope of work as outlined in the engagement letter approved by the board. Be it resolved, the Board of Education adopts the findings of the forensic audit by R.S. Abrams and therefore authorizes legal counsel to share the contents of the report with authorities for further action. So, I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion, Ms. Rowland, second. Second, Ms. Tedesco, yeah, got you. All, any abstentions?
Obstain.
Okay, Ms. Barnett, abstain. And all in favor, I need an aye. Aye. Motion carries. So, the second one is, whereas on February 13th, 2025, the Board of Education appointed Elena Kocavas as special investigating counsel to conduct an independent investigation into a confidential matter as discussed during executive session on such date, and to prepare a report to the Board of Education concerning her findings. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education adopts the findings of a report prepared by counsel and authorizes legal counsel to share the contents of the report with authorities for further action. I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion, Ms. Rowland, second. Second, Ms. Tedesco, any abstentions?
I abstain.
One abstention, I need aye. Aye, 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 motion carries. So, the third one is, whereas the Board of Education adopts the findings of a forensic audit by R.S. Abrams and special investigative report prepared by Elena Kocavas, the squire, be it resolved, based upon the contents of the report, the Board authorizes Gersio and Gersio to provide referrals for special counsel to assist the Board with further action. I will need a motion. Motion, Ms. Rivers, second. Second, Mr. Myers, any abstentions?
I abstain.
One abstention, I need an aye from everyone. Aye, so the motion will carry. So, those are the three that were added on. Thank you for everyone for that one. And then, we have a few other action items that were already listed. So, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the stipulation of settlement and general release between the district and parents of student listed in Confidential Schedule A and authorizes the superintendent of schools to execute said stipulation of settlement and general release on behalf of the district and the Board of Education. I need a motion. Motion, Ms. Rowland, second. Second, Ms. Tedesco, all in favor, aye. Any abstentions? Motion carries. So, we have a, resolve, the Board of Education hereby approves the stipulation of settlement and general release between the district and parents of student listed in Confidential Schedule A and authorizes the superintendent of schools to execute said stipulation and settlement and general release on behalf of the district and the Board. Need a motion. Motion, Mr. Myers, second. Second, Ms. Rivers, all in favor, aye. Any abstentions? That motion carries. We have one stipulation with the Psychologist Association. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby ratifies a stipulation of settlement between the North Babylon Union Free School District and the North Babylon Psychologist Association involving the employee named in Confidential Exhibit A. I need a motion. Motion, Mr. Myers, the second. Second, Ms. Tedesco, all in favor, aye. Any abstention? That motion carries. And finally, we have resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby ratifies the side letter agreement between the North Babylon Union Free School District and North Babylon Administrative Association involving the employee named in Confidential Exhibit A. I need a motion. Motion, Mr. Myers, second. Second, Ms. Rowland, all in favor, aye. Any abstention? Motion carries. So, that's it. I'll take this time to, I don't have it in front of me, but this is the time where we usually take any questions. So, as typical with our board policy, please come up to the mics, state your name. If you have any questions, come on down. It'll be agenda items, well, it's partners for anything at this point, yeah. Someone was giving us a little hard time before, so. Take, you wanna switch them? Yeah, no, I think that was giving us a little problem before. There you go, switch it up. Thank you, Ms. Butler.
And within that description, your authorities are involved? I heard release to, send to, give to, variation, authorities. As in outside of the district authorities? As in law enforcement? Okay. Can you, can you expand on the word authorities? No, okay. Hold on, I'm thinking. Are these reports going to be made available to the public? I'm sorry?
The reports will be available through FOIL.
Okay.
Subject to redactions, of course.
Okay, and that request would go to the district clerk? Awesome, thank you.
Thank you so much.
I could speak up. Oh, there you go. Thank you. That's all right. Travis Stewart, 265 Fulton Street. Does the budget break up? The money that you put into each building in the district? It does?
Yeah, for the, for the most part, most categories are by building, instructional buildings. So, you'll see like, like all the instructional salaries and supplies and things like that are. There are a few that don't, in terms of like, if something's like a district-wide, we don't allocate it by building. Say, like, a good example would be like central maintenance, like, they go everywhere, so we keep it in one code. But for the most part, things are broken down by building.
Okay. So, for Western Suffolk BOSIs that operates out of the Brennan School, if you look at Google Map for all the schools in the district, every building's received solar panels except for that building. Is that in the plans for any budgets for the district?
No, so Brennan would be a little bit different, because it is rented out. The solar district-wide was done through an energy performance contract, which did not include the Brennan building. So, as of right now, no, there are no plans to put solar on those buildings. And the main reason why is the, what is funding the energy performance contract is a reduction in the utility bills. Western Suffolk BOSIs does pay for those bills. So, we, we wouldn't really be able to put that in an energy performance contract.
Okay, what about the roof on the building?
The roof itself, we, we obviously own the building, own the structure. So, in terms of like our lease agreement with BOSIs, we do maintain the roof.
Okay, so if you look on Google Earth, that roof is in, there's deferred maintenance on that roof. And if you go into the auditorium, there was a leak that was fixed in the fall, late fall, early spring. And you could still see the deferred maintenance on another leak coming in through that, you know, what they just fixed. And then, if you look on Google Earth, the roof is in significant disrepair, as well as the basketball courts at that building. Those are the same hoops my 65-year-old father played on when he was a student at Belmont Lake Junior High School. So, I just wanna make sure that there's an equitable distribution of funds to all buildings that the district owns. Because as a property owner, if I rent something to somebody, yes, the tenant pays me, but I'm still responsible for the maintenance of that property. So, I just wanna put that on the board's radar for future budgets.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Awesome, thank you so much. Any other questions? As be that, I don't see any other questions at this time. Again, thank you all for coming out. Continue to please join us on our budget presentations. And as those important dates are coming up, please share them with our neighbors and friends. The holiday break is coming up. The spring vacation is coming up, so everyone, please enjoy your holidays, enjoy special occasions with family and friends, safe travels if you're doing that, and enjoy vacation. So, we'll see you soon, and have a great one. I need a motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor, aye? All righty.